Activities run by our student leadership group along with our school counselors that build community and encourage peer connection. We also run during the month of October new segments where counselors and our broadcast team highlight positive messages and anti-bullying themes. And in addition to these ongoing efforts, like you've heard earlier, we actively are looking forward to Unity Day this year where we wear our orange tie-dye T-shirts, which will be on Wednesday, the 22nd. On that day, we will also be having leadership selfie cameras and photo booths so that we're able to promote inclusion and fun but without having students use their own personal cell phones. And then our positive change ambassadors with the helpful school counselors have designed and will be distributing flyers highlighting the signs of bullying and also the strategies the students can use to combat it. So if you are a target of bullying, what can you do? Who can you go see? And if you're maybe a stander, someone that's just standing by, what can you do to help the situation? So these initiatives not only raise awareness but also are fostering a sense of ownership and a pride among our students. When students really take the charge, the message resonates more deeply. And that leads directly to our sources of strength campaigns that will be coming up shortly. But I won't go into that today because I know that Mr. Emel will go a little bit more in depth. Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. Emel.
So as you've heard throughout the presentation, there are many ways that our K-12 school counselors support bullying prevention. As Ms. Rotella stated, the another tool that is being used across all levels, thank you, I forgot. Another tool that is being used across all levels is sources of strength. As shared in a prior school board presentation, sources of strength is an evidence-based program that we are using K-12 to support the work of social and emotional learning. While sources of strength may look differently at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, at all levels, it is focused on students using their strengths to build community. Through sources of strength, students are learning how to celebrate each other, make an appropriate apology if necessary to each other, and see the perspectives of other students. For example, at the elementary and intermediate levels, students learn to exercise patience and build community in talking circles where each student has a chance to share celebrations. At the middle and high school level, students from diverse groups, student athletes, students in performing arts, students who achieve, and students who struggle academically are all trained as peer advisors as they implement school-wide campaigns focused on building community and positive school culture and climate. So thank you very much.
Thank you to the counseling team. And Mr. Emel, that was great to hear. And I'm welcoming Mrs. Radford back up for another presentation.
Thank you Chair Seberg. I'm going to ask our clerk to come down and join me with this presentation. Virginia School Boards Association or VSBA Academy Awards, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes school board members for their dedication, time, and commitment to strengthening board governance through participation in VSBA meetings, conferences, and professional development. Our members earn credits through the VSBA School Board Academy based on participation from July 1st to June 30th each year. This evening, we recognize the following board members for their continued professional growth and service. And as I call your names, if you don't mind coming down, Ms. Garza has certificates for you, and we will take a group picture at the conclusion. Our Award of Distinction for 84 credits in two years receives a certificate and starfish pin. That is Chair Suzanne Seberg and Vice Chair Jill Spall. For the Award of Excellence, 48 credits in two years receives a certificate and silver pin. That is Board Member Sarah Bresia and Dr. Kevin Newman. He did receive it though, so. The Award of Achievement for 24 credits per year receives a certificate and bronze pin, and that's Dr. Zella Jones and Ms. Lisa Stevens. And the Award of Recognition, which is 15 credits per year as a certificate, Diana Brown, Dana Marie Miles, and Ms. Alba Garza. Again, it's noteworthy to speak on this because I know lots of times people see our board members here, that you might see them in our schools on various occasions, but they do a lot of professional development, traveling to Charlottesville, traveling to Richmond, networking with other boards across the state. And so I think it's fitting that VSBA takes time to recognize that you don't just show up at events, you know, that you are definitely doing things to help with board governance. And we appreciate everything that you do for Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. And I did want to mention that there's some construction going on at the building next door. So when you hear the banging and clanging, it's that's what that is. And I'm sorry if it was disruptive to our presenters tonight. Okay. Now we're on board committee reports, and Mrs. Stevens would like to make a mention for the Policy Committee.
Thank you Chair. The Policy Committee is going to be meeting at 5:00 PM on the 28th of this month, just before the regular school board meeting. We're going to discuss three VSBA policy updates, and then two policies we're going to look at, JHCF and IGR. We will be meeting here in one of the front rooms. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll go to Educational Support and Finance Committee Chair, Ms. Jill Spall.
Hello. We did meet back in September, possibly the 23rd. The 16th of September was the day that we met. And we talked about a couple different things. We are going to be receiving information from staff about story plans for Jenny Dean launch of that new school in 2026. And we are also going to hear from staff about finance, from our finance department about return on investment for work sessions that we are going to be having a joint meeting with our council in November. So those were two things that were decided, and I think the meeting went pretty well. We put about a couple other things back to staff, but they won't come before the board. So things like the 50th anniversary were discussed, but not necessarily something that's going to come back to us anytime soon. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair. Next up is public comments. At this time, we welcome members of the public who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat public comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And signed in first, I have Anna Demaria.
Good evening. I am Anna Demaria, President of the Manassas Education Association. And I find it coincidental that you all just received certificates for professional development because that's what I'm here to speak about. So we, the MEA, sent out a survey about how staff felt the professional development and in-service week went before kids arrived back to school. We had a lot of very detailed data, and I'm just here to give a quick snapshot, but I do have an email ready to send to you and central office staff what our members and other staff members had to say, because we opened up the survey to any staff. So overall, our teachers appreciate the professional learning that is professional learning that is practical, collaborative, and relevant to their roles. Departmental meetings, content-focused workshops, and sessions led by district staff were consistently cited as valuable and immediately applicable to classroom practice. These examples show that when PD is thoughtfully designed, it can truly support teachers and improve student learning. Staff also identified several challenges. Many felt overwhelmed by the volume of PD, with limited time for classroom setup, lesson planning, and team collaboration, especially new teachers who felt underprepared for the start of the year. Repetitive or one-size-all sessions were viewed as low value, and specialized staff such as our ESPs often lack PD, or ESPs often lack PD relevant to their responsibilities. Additional concerns included scheduling issues, the timing of convocation, and limited opportunity for meaningful feedback. So based on the feedback we received, these are just some recommendations to keep in mind for next year. Staff would like protected, full, unencumbered classroom preparation days. Differentiate PD by role and experience, including targeted sessions for ESPs, new teachers, and veteran staffs. Reducing repetitive or low-impact sessions and prioritizing PD with clear classroom relevance. Improve scheduling and calendar design, including reconsidering the timing and format of convocation. And strengthen feedback systems to ensure that staff voices guiding PD planning are anonymous. So in summary, our educators want professional development that respects their time, supports their work, and prepares them to give students the best possible start to the year. And since I have a little bit of time left, just two things, one personally. I was part of a PD that I found very valuable. It was the elevation training that Mr. Emel organized for us. I use that website every single day. So we definitely have PD that is supportive, and I use it as an ESL teacher every single day. And then also, the Osborne Alumni Association reverse raffle is this Saturday. If you are looking for something to do, tickets are $100. It gets two people in for all-you-can-eat buffet and drinks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maria. Next up is Jenny Higginbotham.
I don't care how large I make this font, I still need glasses. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Newman. I am Jenny Higginbotham, MEA Education Support Professional at Large and the Chair of the Virginia Education Association Education Support Professional Committee. I wanted to speak with you tonight about my passion for the education support professionals, or ESPs, in MCPS. In my over 20 years in this division, I have seen some amazing work by the ESPs here. There are nine job families that are under the ESP umbrella, and we have outstanding people in doing great things in all of those areas, which is why it saddens me that we do not offer relevant, job category-specific professional development in all ESP categories at MCPS. I also find it a bit questionable how the Meet and Confir program excludes members of, excludes members from all ESP job families. The plan for one ESP to represent the five elementary schools, to cover ESPs from paras to clerical to food service to custodians to translators seems ridiculous and as if those higher and as if those higher up don't see the importance of representation. Our education support professionals have watched as the pay divide between teachers and ESPs continue to grow. We see the disparity in the increase in salaries for certified staff versus classified staff while continuing to increase the responsibilities of the classified staff. We see that you don't plan relevant PD for us. We see when you try to say Meet and Confir is for all, but yet not all will be at the table. Education support professionals are the workhorses of the division. You cannot run schools without us. Perhaps it's time for MCPS to honor the work and commitment of your classified staff with decisions that you make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Okay, moving on. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Bresia, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Ms. Brown, would you please read the proclamation for this evening?
Good evening, everyone. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes Bullying Prevention Month to raise awareness and promote action to ensure that all students can learn in a safe, supportive environment. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas nearly 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 10% of elementary schools, 15% of high schools, and 28% of middle schools reported the occurrence of bullying at school at least once a week, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and electronic, and can happen in many places, both on and off school grounds, and whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas the VSBA has developed sample policies to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Now, therefore, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes the month of October 2025 as VSBA Bullying Prevention Month, with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in Virginia schools and classrooms during that time.
Thank you. And it was unanimously voted on and approved by the school board this evening. Thank you, Ms. Brown. On our discussion agenda tonight, we have student achievement, and Ms. Betty Jo Winham, Director of School Leadership, and Dr. Jennifer Casada, Executive Director of Finance and Accountability, will present an update on the new alternative education program.
Good evening Chair Seberg, Dr. Newman, and Vice Chair Spall, along with all other esteemed members of the board. This evening, I'm going to be joined by Dr. Casada to provide an initial update on the restructuring of alternative education within Manassas City Public Schools. We will present an overview of the current framework and support systems in place, along with our progress toward the launch of Manassas Pathways. This program is our division's distinctive alternative education initiative funded and approved through the partnership of this board and the city council as a pilot project. As you know, one of the school board's priorities has been to create an alternative education program to better serve students whose needs are not fully met in traditional settings or who require a different school environment to succeed both academically and behaviorally. This initiative began in 2023, and a presentation was delivered to the school board during its retreat in June of that year. During that year of 2022 to 2023, we started exploring ways to support students who learn differently and need an alternative pathway to success. Since then, this topic has been discussed in joint meetings with the city council in February 2024, June 2024, and March 2025, as well as in multiple discussions with the school board throughout last year, 2024 and 25. So today, it's exciting for me to be here to share tangible evidence that this has resulted, great things are starting to result from these focus efforts. In tonight's presentation, you will learn about the progress made so far to ensure that Manassas Pathways opens on time as scheduled. This work directly supports our MCPS strategic plan, which calls for inclusive and collaborative learning environments where all students feel safe, supported, engaged, and most importantly, valued. It also reinforces the school board's commitment to increase in student achievement and graduation rates by keeping students on track to earn their diploma. Following tonight's presentation, as you will see on this slide, you will receive two additional updates, November and December. On November 5th, we're going to provide an in-depth logistics update, and on December 9th, you will receive information regarding staffing and programmatic development. So those will be a little more detailed and extensive, but the goal tonight is for you to really get the gist, and we want and the public to get a gist of what we are working on and what we're excited about. So the next slide shows our current team. Last school year, a budget request for the school year 2026 was approved to fund a coordinator of alternative education programs to oversee and align our division's alternative education programs for students receiving education through non-traditional means, both within and outside of MCPS. While our school division has provided various alternative ways for students to engage with academic, these programs have often been implemented and operated in isolation rather than under a cohesive framework and network that we really are guiding the work of together. So the purpose of this request was to establish and align a common vision for all these programs, ensuring that they work together with clarity and systematic processes that are equitable to enhance student achievement. that are equitable to enhance student achievement. These alternative education options, which will sound familiar to you, include it, and still include, evening school, our GED program, OHS's blended learning, home-based instruction, CBI, and independence. Excitingly, this school year, we have added two additional options, including Virginia Virtual at Manassas, which we call VAVA, and Manassas Pathways. Ms. Cherish Skinker was hired for this position in the spring of 2025, and she's joined us here tonight, so I'd just like you guys to see who she is. She's behind a lot of this work. Additionally, students participating in these programs, particularly those students who receive instruction outside of our school's offerings due to long-term suspensions, expulsions, or placements in alternative education for disciplinary reasons, have experienced limited academic progress monitoring. So there was a recognized need for enhanced student support and accountability for these students. To address this need, a 10-month position this school year, so before the, before we received the $2 million, before that, we repurposed a 10-month position to be the role of Alternative Education Case Manager. So this was not a new position added, but we repurposed the 10-month. In this position currently, Bridget Pierce serves primarily as the Academic and Success Liaison between students, their caregivers, the school, and the district. In this role, she will also provide direct student support services to students enrolled in Manassas Pathways on a daily basis. So those two positions that I just talked about, they're supporting all of our students who receive some form of alternative education. And then in July, was really exciting, the successful partnership between the school board and city council resulted in an approved allocation of $2 million from the fund balance to support the implementation and operation of a pilot alternative education program, which we now call Manassas Pathways, for fiscal year 2026. The Alternative Education Program Administrator and Administrative Associate are the only positions thus far that are in place and funded through that fund balance. Mr. Brian Coleman, also present tonight, was appointed as the Manassas Pathways Program Administrator, and he will oversee the day-to-day operations of Manassas Pathways. He is working closely with the Coordinator of Alternative Education Programs, Ms. Skinker, to prepare for the program's launch scheduled in January 2026. Additionally, the Administrative Associate from NASSAS Pathways, Erica Kozler, is also in place. She also has served as our Virginia Virtual Academy Registrar. She has been appointed to begin the necessary planning and preparatory projects to ensure that Pathways opens on time for our students. To date, her work and dedication to meeting the needs of our students has contributed to a very, very successful launch and partnership with Virginia Virtual Academy, which has really been successful. I didn't put "very, very" in my notes, but really has been successful. I'm excited about it. And she works alongside Ms. Skinker and myself currently in that role. This team that's listed above has achieved so much since the school year began, and we started working together this summer, and we keep adding to the team. But tonight's update focuses on the launch of Manassas Pathways, but I did think it was important to show where we are building from. So. The table in front of you provides outlines of all of the deliverables that we have accomplished to date. So everything up there is accomplished at this point, along with the various partnerships involved in completing each task. As you will see on the chart, this is not a one-man show. It's a huge collaboration project because, number one, these are all of our kids and require all of our services and deserve all of our services. Next month, our presentation will showcase an even greater number of achievements as we continue to work through our task lists related to program logistics. I compare it to like a punch list when you're building a new house, right? You're really looking at every little detail. Key areas currently being developed and finalized, which will be shared in future updates, include hiring, onboarding, training, completing renovations, finalizing program handbooks, assessing student enrollment status, and planning day-to-day operations for the new program. I am proud of the work of Mr. Coleman, and he is igniting a leadership retreat for his small but mighty team already, so that's coming in the coming weeks. So again, like, we really are taking this work seriously. This project truly represents a collaborative effort. Reaching this stage has required careful planning and teamwork across various departments, including instruction, transportation, security, food services, and technology. Together, we are building a solid foundation for the successful launch of this program in January. We remain positive, we remain hopeful, and we are really prepared to tackle any obstacle that's coming our way. So in front of you now, you're going to see a little bit of the design. Manassas Pathways is designed for approximately 30 to 40 students at a time who require a non-traditional learning environment. This need is typically identified through disciplinary hearings for long-term suspension and alternative education recommendations. Additionally, principals can collaborate directly with the Coordinator of Alternative Education Programs, Ms. Skinker, to explore options for students who may benefit from a non-traditional setting. And again, that's the beauty of having her position overseeing all the different programs, because we really can be equitable, meaningful, and intentional with getting students where they are best served. And we do offer a lot of options here, and I do think as a board, that's something to be really proud of, because I've been in other divisions where that isn't the case. So even if it's not mandated by the Discipline Hearing Officer, she is available to help schools navigate and help those kids get what they need. Referrals from the principal, of course, will depend on capacity, what we have available at the time, if it's a Pathways placement. And these details and workflow and the referral process are currently being worked through and finalized by them. So I'm sure, you know, there's questions around it, but we are being very careful in how we're planning so that when we do communicate plans, they're ready to go and to minimize miscommunications. Manassas Pathways offers smaller class sizes, individualized instruction, and social and emotional support aligned to the student's individual needs and strengths. This primary goal is clear. We're going to help students make academic progress, maintain a connection to school, earn their high school diploma, and help them find post-secondary success after that. The scheduling structure utilizes a hybrid model to accommodate students in grades five through 12, based on capacity. High school students will attend classes in half-day shifts, while middle and intermediate students will attend full-day shifts. Additionally, Pathways will implement an off-site restriction support service aimed at reducing unexcused absences resulting from short-term suspensions for specific code of conduct violations. For example, so this is going to be a hypothetical situation that I'm going to share to help you understand what our vision and our goal is for an off-site restriction. This is only to illustrate the intent and purpose of the support service. So again, this is not like that we're working on building it. So instead of suspending a student for three days due to a qualifying violation, let's just say the qualifying violation is a student just refusing to go to class. Just walking around, you know, warning, progressive discipline. We've had conferences, we've met, and a principal reaches out to Mr. Coleman. So let's say that's a qualifying violation. Instead of sending that home, that student home for three days to still not be engaged with learning, we would have an option to consider that student to attend Pathways where they would get restorative support and resource to help them return to school. In those three days, they would be counted in attendance, not as an unexcused absence, which a suspension out of school is an unexcused absence for a student. So in saying that, instead of suspending a student for three days due to a qualifying violation, which Ms. Skinker and Mr. Coleman are working through now to determine what those violations would qualify and what can, what are we best student to serve, school administrators could consult with the Pathways Administrator to check if there is capacity available for an off-site restriction assignment. This assignment would include restorative practices related to the initial minor offense, helping to prevent such issues from escalating if they are not addressed. This support service is currently in the planning phase with a goal for a soft launch in March. So we're going to open in January. Our goal is to implement that in March, as we want it to be successful. The alternative education team is diligently working to create streamlined systems to ensure that processes and methods are solidified and communicated clearly. Upcoming principal meetings will serve as a means to disseminate program information as it is formalized and finalized. And looking ahead, one challenge we aim to overcome soon is hiring qualified staff who are enthusiastic and excited about working with our students. So if you are listening tonight and you are interested in serving this capacity, please visit the Manassas City Public Schools website. We do have job postings listed, and we welcome anyone that's excited by hearing about this program and wanting to be a part with it, to come join us. The December update will provide more detailed information about the program structure. I can attest that both Ms. Skinker and Mr. Coleman are readily planning for the onboarding, so our goal is to hire at the beginning of December so we can have training, team building, and gathering everyone for a collective efficacy of how we are going to meet these students' needs, and also being excited about the work. Dr. Casada will now come share about how we're going to measure our success.
All right. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, school board members, Dr. Newman. What, when implementing a program, a new program as a pilot, it's critical to gather data about the implementation and impact of the program so informed decisions can be made about expansion. I do want to add that I meet weekly with the alternative education team, with Mr. Coleman and Ms. Skinker, and now Ms. Pierce also, with my dual hats, right, talking about the logistics from the funding side, but then also on the accountability and outcome side. As you've heard and seen throughout this presentation, the goal in a big way is to create an inclusive and collaborative learning environment where all students feel supported by, I'm sorry, all students supported by the program feel safe and valued. We aim to provide an interactive, innovative, and equitable learning atmosphere that opens up a world of opportunities for our students. With an alternative education program like Pathways, individualized support is provided to students who may have needs that are best served outside of the traditional setting. The goal for students is to keep them engaged in instruction and reach the ultimate goal of graduation. Depending on where students are in terms of their journey toward graduation, the metrics for success are going to look different. The success criteria included on this slide represent different ways that the success of the program for individual students can be measured and then aggregated. So for all students who participate in Pathways, academic progress can be measured using grades. This can be through quarterly grades assigned in courses, like in any other class, but also movement through online course modules and performance on assessments, whether they are online assessments or in-person assessments. For students at the high school level, and as you heard Ms. Winham say, progress toward graduation is a success criterion, perhaps one of the most important success criteria. This is a metric that we can also use to look at the impact of the program by aggregating the number of students making progress toward graduation requirements, as well as looking at the number of those who actually graduate and the number who drop out. Along the way, it is critical to assess the engagement of students in the program. Attendance data for students participating in this program will be collected and analyzed and compared to the same students' previous attendance patterns. Student behavior data will be analyzed as well to see the impact of the program on discipline referrals, both for students within the program but also at their base schools. Comparison to past patterns will be made. We will track the long-term suspension and expulsion numbers for MCPS since this program is designed to support students before they become repeat offenders and reach the long-term suspension or expulsion stage. Ultimately, the goal for many students, especially those who are not yet close to graduation age, is for them to return to their base schools. As a result, reentry patterns and the lengths of student stays in Pathways will be analyzed. You heard Ms. Winham talk about the different ways that students will be served. So each of those different pathways within Pathways, right, will require us looking a little differently. As mentioned, this is only the first of a series of presentations and updates about the Manassas Pathways program before it launches for students in January 2026. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this overview tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Casada and Ms. Winham. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Breja?
So thank you both. I did send my questions in advance, and you guys did a very great job of incorporating a lot of that in there already, so we can have a more focused conversation now. It's possible you said it and I missed it, but we do have kids as young as fifth grade who are coming into this program, so what is the plan for recess and PE for those kids?
Yeah, so they are working on the daily schedule, but just a fun fact, we do have in our furniture and equipment purchase, that we have treadmills, like some exercise, like equipment, there are structured breaks for play for that engagement time. But in regard to health and physical education coursework, that would be provided through the mythology that they're getting their courses. So like, if it was edmondum or whatever that is, but there are structured breaks, just like if it's raining outside. We don't have a playground or monkey bars or anything like that at the office, but there are structured time for kids to have breaks.
Okay. So the, I'm looking at the staffing for By the Numbers, I see, and you explained there was a difference between Meet the Team and By the Numbers and basically... And the staffing that I'm seeing on By the Numbers is the fund balance staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So I see an ESOL teacher, a SPED teacher, a math teacher, an English teacher, and a reading interventionist. Are these, first of all, are any of these through VAVA, or these are all anticipated to be MCPS employees?
All of those are, all are MCPS employees regardless. In regard to funding, to get technical with that, which is also exciting news. So the administrative associate paired with Pathways, who's serving Pathways, also serves as the VAVA registrar, which we will be able to recoup money back from VAVA to offset that. So it gives you like a little, the full salary will not have to come from that.
Okay. That's good. So we have a math teacher, English teacher, reading interventionist, but we have kids in grades from five to 12. So how are, is one reading teacher, one math teacher, one reading interventionist serving all of those great...
So, again, it's very individualized, so you're gonna, it's not a typical classroom, like you move classes. So whether the, however they're getting their services. So if it's online, like if it's edmondum, their teacher of record will be through, you know, they'll be working through there, and then staffing will partner with them. Again, that is part of the programmatic updates that I think you will get more certainty with in December when they come to provide that. And not that I don't, I can speak of my idea and what I think, but I do want to value the time that they're putting in to really plan, and I don't want to speak for them.
Right.
But again, it's going to depend on the staffing that we get. We want to get high-quality staff. Right now, they're posted. It's going to depend on the age of the kids, where they are with their progression to meeting this requirements for a diploma, and the method that we're delivering instruction, which could be a hybrid model.
Okay. So, thank you for that. But basically, the answer is wait until the programmatic update in December.
Yeah, I mean, I can give you tons of, I just want to, I don't, I don't, I don't want to make it confusing. I want to, you know...
Right, I want it to be right. If we're going to put it out here in front of the cameras.
I promise we're working on it, but again, it also, I just think it is important to keep in mind that every kid coming to this is going to be very different. It could be a student with an IP that requires specific services, that that looks different for. So we are planning for all of those unique situations right now. You know, we could go all year and not have a fifth grader, but we are equipped to provide instruction for grades five through 12.
Gotcha. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the success criteria. I'm going to quibble a little bit with you, Dr. Casada, because you said the goal was an inclusive collaborative learning environment. The goal is student academic success. It's a pillar, a support pillar, is the inclusive learning environment. So the goal is, yes, to create this inclusive environment, but the goal ultimately is student academic success. It was a little topsy-turvy, so.
Okay.
The top. So I was a little confused as you were talking about the, are the success criteria, are these success criteria for the students or success criteria for the program?
It's a little bit of both, right? Because as you heard, you heard said, individual students are going to come in and you're going to have targeted goals for them. The goal could be reentry. The goal is graduation, all of those things, and success in their classes. But for us to look at the program, we need to be able to then look at, in aggregate, are students making progress in terms of grades? Are students making progress in terms of graduation requirements? Are students coming, right? Are students having behavior issues? So it's a bit of both, right? So for an individual student, their metrics are going to be within these big umbrellas, but then we will aggregate up to say, okay, what numbers and percentages of the students being served, as well as other metrics for the program are, how are we actually serving these students? How many? How are they coming through? How long are they staying? How, so how is it actually working? Because that's really important to help us know, help you know, how to continue the program, right? So it's both outcomes but also implementation metrics, so it is both.
Okay. So we don't have, I mean, I know in general, like, taking attendance, for example, because you did say that pretty concretely, let's look at their attendance before they started Pathways and look at their attendance during and after Pathways. Do we have a percentage we would like to see that improved by? Or we are, we're not putting that far to the point on it?
I think, until we know who the students coming in are, because some are students who may have had attendance problems, some are students who may not have, right? Same thing, they'll be around the behaviors, right? You want to prevent students from becoming repeat offenders, right? So those, those are more tangible in terms of actual numbers. So I don't know that I could say a percent for the attendance, because some of them may not have had attendance issues. It may have been a behavior issue that has led there. Sometimes those are, you know, go hand in hand, but not always.
Can I, can I share something?
Yeah.
So this may help a little more. So of course, you're going to look at kids individually. Like you could have a student, a high-achieving, very high-achieving gifted AP student who's made a bad decision, that we still want to serve and keep them moving. So I think, I don't want our staff, and I don't want the staff in Manassas City to lose perspective that these students are still the base school students. So doctor, it could be a student from Osborne High School that's placed at Pathways, but Pathways...
Pathways doesn't have their own school report card. Their accreditation to that school, that kid is, Osborne High School is responsible for that kid's success. So that, that Osborne High School, school quality profile is, that's going to reflect that student's success. So I think that's important. What we don't want is we're sending these kids out and we're not, we're not engaging them with instruction and then we're not getting their success, we're not getting their story told within our, our school report card. So it is hard. I want a successful program that's getting these kids to meet the expectation of all the kids that are at Osborne. And if we're failing to do that, then I think that's where we'll have to look at it. But it's hard to put these specific goals. Each kid, I think the kid's success is the program's success. And so that would be my answer, because each individual kid is going to have different goals to meet. There could be a student with an IP who we're working to get an applied studies diploma. But at the end of the day, the graduation and the accomplishment of that kid is factored into the school that they are assigned to. So it is not at the school level, out of sight, out of mind, this kid is now at Pathways. This kid is still a student at Osborne High School and included within their school achievement data. So I do think we can look at from that lens, our goal is to help accreditation of all of our schools by taking kids who in the past we haven't been serving as best as we could. And that's, it's not probably the best direct answer, but I really don't want it to be out of sight, out of mind, because we are connected to everyone's achievement.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, I do want to be very careful about how we collect this data and then share the story afterwards, because as a pilot program, it is not necessarily continuing into the future unless we can show that there is success. So we want to be very intentional about collecting that and demonstrating that when the time comes. And you, I forget which one of you that said it, there is, so this is launching in January, but then something is happening in March. What is happening in March?
So specifically in your questions, you ask about the off-site restriction.
Okay.
So the off-site restriction is, like, we don't want to go all full in at the very beginning. We want to serve our kids that are there and then add in that service component that is like an addition icing on the cake to our program. How else can we support kids who are in need, but not at that disciplinary process yet? That's a great measure. Those kids that come to us, how many of those never have to go to the disciplinary process because we're intervening soon? So that would be a sample, a good example of data we could collect. What is that repeated, are they a repeat offender? Or does that work? How do we keep them engaged? So that's an example of part of the program that Mr. Coleman and Ms. Kinker are planning to launch in March.
So that would be an expansion, a small expansion.
It's like a student support services, it's just a different lens, how we can support. And we have like, there's a select, like, number of spots that they're determining each day that could be served for that purpose.
Gotcha. Okay, well, thank you very much. This was a very good presentation. You told a nice story. Thank you for that.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, for the record, I just want to mention that the staff, thank you.
I'm sorry.
The staff actually including, included the complete goal in Slides two and four, achieving student academic success through inclusive and collaborative learning environments, enabling all students to feel safe and supported in an interactive, innovative, and equitable learning environment. So it was in there, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone down here? Ms. Miles?
I'm just pleased that you now have, and I know in previous years you've had something for our students, but now it's consistent. And that they're not only helping our students, but our families. Because I know when students are, you know, in the AltEd program, a lot of times, parents don't know how to support them. And so just having that consistency, I think is so important. And it, and like you, you were saying, they're still a part of our school system. And it's just crucial for their future. So I just wanted to give a shout out to what you've done. And I really like the name and just the quote underneath the providing students a world of opportunity. So I just think that's great, because there are a lot of parents that kind of, that was then, you know, you really can't control how, sometimes how your children act. But now having a support system that knows that they can get back, hopefully back into the regular school system is wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Dr. Jones?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for all that you've done. I think it's so important that we will be providing another opportunity for students to succeed, so thank you for your work.
Mrs. Stevens? Thank you, Chair. I want to go backwards a little bit, because you mentioned all of the programs that Ms. Kinker is in charge of. And I tried to get them all, but I may have missed Evening School, GED, CBI, Homebound, Independence, Vava, and Manassas Pathways.
And my Blend It Learning, which is-
Blend and Learn.
Is at OHI, so Osborne High School. It's a way to sort of a hybrid model to help those kids. So we did stick that in there as well.
Okay.
It is an alternative form. And again, she, just to oversee those, to make sure we're considering all for kids and not just saying every kid needs Pathways. We really are doing the best fit on their needs and their strengths. Because sometimes that's what we forget to focus on. Like we do student by need and that's wonderful, and especially for these kids, but we all, we don't want to forget that these kids are also bringing strength. So what are they good at that we can also consider when making their choices?
So when, hypothetically, when a student is being considered for an alternative form of education, we're going to look through and see which of these eight might be best for them?
Ideally, yes ma'am.
Okay. So I mean, I don't think people realize it, but we have now eight different ways to support student success, other than being in the brick and mortar building. And that's pretty amazing, because I don't think a lot of people realize that. You know, they think we have regular school and independence and now Vava, but we actually have eight different pathways to success. So I think that's great and I think it's wonderful that, although you're only one person, and it's a whole lot of work, I think it's great that we've got one person who's taking care of these things and ensuring that our kiddos get that by name, by need, but also by strength. And I think that, to me, that's what's so exciting, is that we've added another tool to support our students, to help give them success and help get them graduating, because that's the key at the end of the day. So I think that's amazing. I did have a couple of questions. So in looking at the Meet the Team page, not the Meet the Team page, excuse me, the By the Numbers page on staffing, in my brain, when I think of kids who need alternative forms of education, like the Pathways Program, I tend to think they need a higher level of social emotional support than their peers who are in the brick and mortar schools, and that their families may need more support than what you might see in the brick and mortar schools. Do we have, and, and you may be bringing this out in November, December, you probably are, so I'm probably jumping the gun here and I'm sorry. What do we have in forms of mental health supports for students and then for families?
I think that'll be best addressed later and we can get more, what I will say is this, and we've had great conversation, even Mr. Griffler and I. We also, you know, we want to approach each kid uniquely. So Ms. Pierce, who's your case manager, she's really going to be able to assess that and get kids uniquely what they need. And I say that because I'm at fault and I found myself at fault even as a high school principal, just because a kid has made a bad mistake and got into some trouble. They also could have a very supportive home and they could have, you know, they could have just made a bad decision, but we have to treat each of them the same, to bring, to be open, to learn what they need, because I think by assuming sometimes, which we naturally do, that these kids need services and support, which they do, but I do think looking at each individual kid will be important with Ms. Kinker and Bridget Pierce, who is our student case manager, to make sure that we're getting them the right support. So we do have social emotional learning as shared. Ms. Pierce is working on that to integrate it with Pathway students daily, other students, but also whether we need a social work referral in-house. We also are looking, which will be shared partnerships with TDT, Therapeutic Day Treatment, which I presented on, you know, makes, what qualifying students are based at Pathways, for instance, that could utilize that. So yes, an exclamation mark, yes, but I just think it's really important that we really are looking at each kid individually, so that we are getting the services they need.
And then, and again, this, I might be jumping the gun on this.
It's okay, and they're, they're taking it. They're to give credit for all of this.
So when, when I think about this, will there be, because those kiddos are still considered their students of their base school.
Yes ma'am.
There will still be a lot of communication between base school and Pathways Program.
Yes, and that's prior to the money being made available for this pilot program. That was the reasoning, which I did talk a little bit about, I know, read a lot, but that was the reasoning for Ms. Kinker and then a student case manager, because that was an identified need that we saw lacking. And that, and Ms. Pierce, is that family connection with the division, with whether it's return positions, if it's an expulsion hearing, like helping families navigate this process, because it's a lot. Even being from the field of education, if my son or daughter were put up, like I probably would still want support, because it's an emotional process as a parent. So that, before any of this, we saw the need for that and that's why we used a position at Osborne and repurposed it for a case manager position.
Okay, that's great. And then one last question, and this question came to my mind as I was listening to public comments about professional development. We're going to have a math teacher, an English teacher, a reading interventionist. What about CLTs for them? Because we don't want them to be in a silo. But it's a di- It's a, yeah, and PD, it's a different conversation. So first, we're going to have onboarding, but you know, like CLTs, it's not like you have a group of four teachers, all teaching earth science. So again, you know, individual, but more of like, what, how are the students performing? How do we intervene? And how are we working together to meet their needs? So they're, they are already, their minds are just a-going. They came to, Chair should have come to me this afternoon and talking about Mr. Coleman with wanting the CLTs and how, what that would look like. But it's more important just a support structure for the staff, so they can best support the kids. And some of that for staff in an environment like this, it could be tough. So we got to think about what do they need, what, how do we need to build them up? What, do they need a break? Like, things like that. We just need to be in tune to the staff that are coming to work for us as well. So they are, I promise you, they are on it. Well, thank you. I appreciate the time you took to give us the presentation, the answers you provided us, even though we're, we're talking, we are asking questions that are ahead of where you are. It is exciting. And you know, to me, it's especially exciting, because it gives our kids that extra avenue to help them be successful. And because also, Pathways is not going to be a forever placement. It's a placement to get our kids where we need them to be, so they can go back to base school and be successful in their base school, because you know, when, with my, with my SPED hat on, you have to think, the least restrictive environment for them to be successful is their base school. And that's where we want them to be. So thank you and thank you all for everything you're doing to get this up and running. I think we're all excited, we're a little nervous.
And I don't want to seem dismissive of questions, I do, but I do want to make sure what we communicate is right and I want to respect the time that they're putting on and the work to get things right.
So thank you. And thank you, everyone, for all the work you've done already. I, this doesn't encompass probably all the conversations you've had, so thank you.
Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I just want to say, this has been a really long time coming and it's moving quickly, but I believe in Manassas Pathways. And I'm really, really excited. And personally, maybe I should be nervous, but I'm not nervous at all. I believe in the location that we picked. I believe in the resources that are committed. I believe in the enhanced accountability. And I think that, you know, the people, the, the program that we're putting forth is the very best version of our demonstrated need, which is very serious and can pay off, you know, in, in great ways when, when it's done right, which I believe it will be. So I just want to thank everyone for their time and their effort. We're doing big things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Ms. Winham, thank you. Dr. Casada and the AltEd team, thank you all. And we look forward to hearing more as we continue to roll through this. Right? Thank you. Okay, up next is board member comments, and I'll go first to our student representatives, Ms. Breeden.
Good evening. I wanted to thank our counselors for the encouraging presentation about the measures we're taking against bullying. I really enjoyed the orange bracelet idea from Metz Middle School. And I'm also looking forward to wearing orange next Wednesday for Unity Day, which Osborne has actually implemented as a part of our Homecoming Spirit Week. And speaking of homecoming, it is Saturday, the 25th. So if you know or have a kid in high school, please encourage them to go. It's a great opportunity for the students to connect and have fun. And lastly, I just had one idea to put out there. Upon a visit to another high school, my peers and I noticed some banners in the auditorium displaying victories of various like alternate academic teams besides sports. We saw just marching band and the speech and debate team, for instance. And, sorry. Given the strength of our marching band and their earned distinctions, as well as our Skills USA and Speech and Debate Team making it to the regional level competitions last year, I feel it is appropriate to also look into these banners, to display these accomplishments. I would be happy to email you photos that I took of the pictures for reference. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. Mr. Imun.
Okay. So thank you for the presentation that you, that I really liked, you know, your ideas of how one mistake shouldn't ruin your life. And I really like how Pathways is sounding, so I'm excited to see where that goes. Today, I didn't really have anything except my, one of my friends, they just, since they know I'm a student representative, they just wanted to know, and I'm, they wanted to know if there was any plan on fixing some utilities in the school bathrooms in Osborne, because some of the sinks, they don't really work, you know? Mirrors aren't missing. He just wanted me to ask this, so I just wanted to know. And come to the Homecoming game on October 24th. It'll be fun and I'm, I'm pretty sure the football team would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Imun, and we will get back to you with the right pathway to follow for your question. Thank you. Ms. Miles?
Yes, I just want to start with saying that I'm very grateful that our school district celebrates National Bullying Prevention Month with school initiatives. My son was really excited to collect all the bullying prevention bracelets last week. Like he had to show all of them to me in a whole sleeve. But I just think it's so awesome that our counselors have really been very proactive in building a calendar event, so students know that it's important. But I want to encourage parents and guardians to have conversations with their student about using social, social media responsibly. I know that even parents struggle with that, but it's important for us to have those conversations about also recognizing and responding to bullying and preventing bullying before it starts. And if you need more information about that, you can go to wwwstopbullying.gov to get more information. They have videos on there as well and some talks that you can give to your student. So some event, an event that I actually was able to go to, on September 18th, I was able to attend Baldwin Elementary's Back to School Night, the joint multicultural night that they had. It was so nice to see families representing their family's culture and heritage. There was lots of yummy food and it was just a very well-attended event. I wasn't able to go to all the other back to school nights, but I, I noticed that a lot of people were able to come and they were just so excited to share their culture. So I encourage you to make sure you visit your child's school and the events that they're having, because it, it helps you to connect with the staff there and so that you see the children have that connection as well. I have some reminders. We're already in our second week of the shoe drive and I'm happy to report that many shoes have already been donated. So if you have gently used women's or men's tennis shoes, sneakers, or winter boots that you would like to donate, there are donation boxes at central office and at all nine schools. And the last day to drop it, drop off shoes is October 24th. So, OHS's debate team is looking for debate judges. You don't have to have prior experience and training is provided. But the one thing I want to remind everyone, when you're thinking about doing this, is debate competitions can't happen without judges. And right now, we, our debate team is really looking for judges very, very hard, so that way they can compete. If they don't have judges, they aren't able to compete. So if you are a community leader, educator, parent, you want to be engaged more, this is the way to do it. If you need more information, see me, because I can give you to the right person. I actually have a flyer with the person who's dealing with that. And I think that's, that's it that I have for, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Breja?
Thank you. Good to see the bullying prevention spotlight today.[1776.33]
Good to see the bullying prevention spotlight today, that was really great to see. It's been more than a month since we met last, so it's good to be back, happy to see everyone. I'm looking forward to our next meeting, which, speaking of nervousness, should include the VDOE performance categories, so I'm looking forward to that. Since our last meeting, a lot has happened, the most notable being the first CEAC meeting of the school year. That meeting was held in conjunction with the New Steps Program, which is a PEP-like program to educate parents and families on the special education process. So it meant there were new faces at that meeting, which was really great, and there was a really good discussion about communication, and ensuring that families know about the various avenues of involvement available to them. So that was really helpful, really great, really productive. Other events since we last met, our town hall, our Start, Stop, Continue Town Hall, back-to-school nights, all of them. I attended Ready, Set, Vote, put on by the leadership class at OHS, CTE career conversations. Looking ahead, Friday is the end of the first quarter, everybody, we're here already, which is incredible. And next weekend, people have already mentioned, is homecoming. This is also conflicting, and now I'm going to ask for volunteers, with Boonanza at Baldwin Elementary School. Typically, Boonanza relies on high school volunteers looking for their service hours to, you know, run the games and stuff like that, but because it's overlapping with the homecoming game, they're struggling a little bit. So if you are inclined to volunteer at Boonanza, there are plenty of opportunities, or if you are connected through a church or some other youth program with teenagers who need their community service hours, and they are not Osborn students, and they don't have homecoming that night, let me know, and I can find something for them to do. And tonight is also a spirit night, a fundraising night for the Baldwin PTO at Wendy's, and that really bailed me out of dinner tonight. And so if anybody's looking for dinner afterwards, after this meeting, it's the Liberia location. And just a final civic reminder, early voting is underway. If you haven't already done so, your opportunity to vote exists, and I better not speak to any of you on November 5th, and anyone says to me, I didn't get around to it, all right? There's 45 days in Virginia, so go ahead and take advantage of that. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
I had the pleasure to attend the Ready, Set, Go Forum at Osborne High School, and I was glad to see our two school board representatives actively participating and learning about our local and state government. Also attended the United Competition in September. Students enjoyed the competition, and they had lots of fun. The annual CTE Career and Conversation Day at Osborne provided a lot of information to students about internships, job opportunities, and educational opportunities. I even learned some things and have shared with other people in the community. I attended the Gifted in Town, the Advisory Board meeting on October 1st, 2025. The annual report was reviewed, and the advisory board will be working on a new five-year plan. Information was shared on activities at the Art Factory, Science Fair for high school students, enrichment, onboarding, and the Library of Congress field trip. Mark your calendars now for the Gifted Showcase on March 20th, 2026, and for the enrichment camp that will be on June 15th through the 17th. So you can put that on your calendar now. Information has been distributed to the elementary, intermediate, and middle school, middle school and high school regarding participation in the MLK Autorical and Writing Contest, sponsored by the Princeton County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. I would love to see our talented students in Manassas City Public Schools participate, so ask your school principals for information if you are interested. And lastly, let's all continue to keep talking about bullying and how to prevent bullying. Each of us deserves the freedom to pursue our own version of happiness. No one deserves to be bullied. And that was a quote by Barack Obama.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to begin my comments by congratulating my colleagues for their service and for their willingness to improve their governance craft through professional development. Also, congratulations and a huge thanks to the new staff for the Alternative Education Program. I am not nervous at all, because I believe in the power of the unity, and I'm going to coin them as S-B-C-C, Skinker, Pierce, Coleman, and Cosser. So I am not afraid, I am very encouraged that they will be in charge of this. Although I will be traveling on October 22nd, I want to encourage everyone to join the Unity Day Against Bullying. I will make sure to wear orange, and will tell everyone along the way I meet about our efforts against bullying. Thank you to the staff who presented and highlighted very meaningful planned activities. I particularly liked the Positive Change Ambassadors, of course, the Unity Day on the 22nd, and on 10/27, the saying hello to five different people. That's one of my favorites. So thank you so much for putting so much thought and effort into the activities for the students and for the adults. For sake of brevity, I would like to just invite you to follow me on Facebook at Diana Brown, proud school board member, to stay informed of all the happenings and whereabouts, because it has been a month, and I have been pretty busy. So check me out on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you. We're all talking about Bullying Prevention Month. I do want to share an additional resource. It's called Pacer, the National Bullying Prevention Center at Pacer.org. They were founded in 2026, and they're one of the biggest promoters of the official, of Bullying Awareness Month. Bullying Awareness Month originally started as a week. They're the ones who coined wearing the orange shirt. One of the great things about Pacer is they actually have a website designed for children, and a website designed for teens in middle school and high school. Just go to Pacer.org, scroll down to the bottom, you'll see the link for the kids' website, you'll see the link for the teens' website. Please, please, please come out and wear orange on the 22nd, and when someone says, "Why are you wearing orange?", say, "It's Bullying Prevention Night, Month, and it's World Unity Day." I did want to end with just one quick quote that I think fits into Bullying Awareness Month. "Do things for people not because of who they are or what they do in return, but because of who you are." And that was Harold Kushner who said that. So as we go through this month, keep that in the back of your head, that you do things because of who you are, not what you'll receive in return. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Spall?
I just wanted to thank the counselors for their report on bullying. I'd love to see sources of strength infiltrating our schools. I'd love to hear people talking about trusted advisor, trusted adults inside our schools, and the repeated topic of building community. I think that's really important, what we're doing, and I'm very proud of everyone for bringing it forward. Thank to Board Member Brown for the congratulations about VSBA. There are some legislative sessions that I attended, and I think I reported to my peers about that already. The, I attended a committee of the whole meeting, which we were assigned independently, different people, or committees to track through the city, and I'd just like to report that the collaboration, and the, and the tone, and the vibe in that room was very positive toward our schools, so that was much appreciated, and I think reported. I guess, just for tonight, what I want to say is that, a reminder, that public education is the foundation of a healthy society. It is not just another issue, it is the issue that shapes everything else. And as a school board, I believe our duty is both practical and profound, to ensure our schools have strong funding, to support and keep excellent teachers, and to invest in student wellness, academic, emotional, social, and mental. Inequities in our communities are real, but they must never define a child's opportunity. Every student deserves to be lifted up, challenged, and seen for who they are. This is my promise, but I believe strongly that it's a promise of the rest of the board as well, to keep, to protect and strengthen public education, because it is the key to hope, opportunity, and a thriving democracy. So thank you very much for that opportunity, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and I agree 100%. All right, for my comments this evening, I did want to mention that last week, Dr. Newman and I attended Osborn High School's National Honor Society induction ceremony, and congratulations to our very own student representatives, to the school board, Amelia Breeden and Hinaki Moon, who are among 36 students that qualified to participate in the formal ceremony. Each inductee pledges to uphold the high purpose of the National Honor Society. They further pledge to be loyal to their school, and to maintain and encourage high standards of character, scholarship, leadership, and service. Congratulations to all the National Honor Society members, and thank you to the NHS sponsors, Mr. Satyam Patel and Ms. Stephanie Myers, for their guidance and leadership with this organization's efforts. Last Friday, I was able to join 140 Osborn seniors that have been accepted into George Mason University by qualifying academically for their direct admissions program. For most, this was their first college acceptance. They did not have to pay an application fee, and continue, can continue with their college search and ultimate decision, knowing that they are already accepted at George Mason University, 140 students. Regarding the VSBA School Board Academy Awards, I want to thank our entire governance team for their time and dedication to board development with VSBA. By participating in the VSBA educational workshops and trainings, it makes us a stronger and more informed governance team, as we serve our students and community. I wanted to mention, if Wendy's isn't your cup of tea tonight, but you're still hungry, or you want to go for a treat, Foster's is also having a fundraiser to benefit Osborn Robotics this evening until 9 o'clock. They do have milkshakes. And, and I look forward to Unity Day on October 22nd, and wearing my orange shirt. Thank you all for coming tonight, and I ask for a closed session statement.
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part 8, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, is amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2526-0181, PERS 2526-0182.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Breja, that the school board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2526-0181, and PERS 2526-0182. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such-
Uh, we need to return to open session.
Oh, sorry. Chair, I move that we return to open session.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Vice Chair Spall, that the school board return to open session. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I, Chair, I move that the school board certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Breja, that the school board certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Chair?
Yes?
I move that the school board meeting adjourn.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Vice Chair Spall, that the school board meeting adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned.
[inaudible]